City Council, City of Statesboro City Council meeting for July 15th, 2014. The invitation and pledge of allegiance will be delivered by Mayor Protown Will Britt.
Welcome, and I will start with the prayer and then we'll rise to the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you very much for allowing us to gather here today. Thank you so much, my child, and thank you so much for the rain that we definitely needed. Please be with our service men across the world, and please be with our local public safety people as they take care of us. We ask that you grant your wisdom upon this for these meetings and all the proceedings here at City Hall. Lay your hand on us. We ask this in your name. Amen. Do you would please rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to Agenda Item 3, I'd like to make a change in the agenda insofar as moving one item. David Gerald with LND Pro, excuse me, has asked due to health reasons that he isn't feeling well if we could move his item up the agenda this evening. In talking with City Manager Robert Cheshire, we think that would be fine. So, we're going to move Item 13 to appear after Item 5. Okay? Is that all right with everybody? Okay. All right, moving to Item Number 3, which is Public Comments. Bill Thomas has requested to speak to council regarding consent agenda. I'm going to remind everybody of the public comments policy that we currently have, which is two minutes to speak. Please, Todd, make your comments to two minutes and face Mayor and council. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm further until the end of the meeting. That's okay.
So, you want to just speak, let me be clear here, you wanted to speak under Public Comments General?
For this evening, would it be possible to move those minutes over to that time?
No, sir.
Okay.
The way we have, that's the way we have it set up.
That's right. Thank you for the guidance. I'll speak again when we need.
Okay. All right, Agenda Item 4, Consideration of Motion to Approve the Consent Agenda. I'll give councilmen to review the consent agenda and then ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Your second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Next, we're going to have Item 5, which is a public hearing in consideration of application D-14-0601. We're at Pole Start Development requesting a variance regarding a set pack on their development that's being located on Branton Avenue. The details are included on the agenda. I'm going to ask Mandy, Director of Plan and Development, to please introduce this item to our council this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a variance request. The property come on that is 349 Reston Avenue, and we've all recognized the construction that is currently taking place at this location. This variance request is being asked for this evening so that the applicant can construct a single attached retail shopping center on the property. They are asking to subdivide the current property, which is almost 10 acres in size, into two parcels, and they demonstrated that through your packet and on the screen you this evening with the red line that is on the rendering. You'll see the red line, I mean, I have pasted out for the council members on your desk as well. That red line is showing the property line to go between the major tenant, which is commonly the purchase of grocery store, and the remainder of the attached retail tenants. In asking for this request, we reviewed it to the development regulations, including the zoning ordinance, and recognize that attached retail that would spread across two independent parcels is not currently permitted in the zoning ordinance. And if retail is attached, which is AB, there is a setback, excuse me, if you're going to put a partial line, there's a setback that's required that is 20 feet, excuse me, 15 feet. This would violate that and has designated the variance request tonight. We have reviewed it with our development team, as well as the planning commission. Planning commission and the staff is doing a recommendation of approving the variance under the standards of Section 1801 of the zoning ordinance with two conditions for recommendation tonight. Number one is a recognition in writing that if this variance is to be granted this evening, it would apply only internally to this property and this applicant. It would not affect any of the other setbacks or property lines of the adjacent properties that are not taking place or taking part in this request this evening. And number two, that public access be granted to the parcel that would be created by the proposed subdivision that's designated by the red line on the rendering tonight. Zoning ordinance does require public access, and this parcel, if created, would not enjoy public access because obviously we'd be cut off from Branton Avenue by the major tenant. And Archway Drive, which many of us know as the road beside McDonald's, if you can visualize that in your mind, is currently a private drive. So, we've given a recommendation that public access be provided to this parcel through one of two possible means. The first means would be the improvement of Archway Drive, the city standards and dedication to the city as a public roadway. And the second option would be that a cross-access easement be plotted for Archway Drive that would allow the public access to this proposed parcel from Fair Road. Planning commission joined us in the recommendation or made an offer for Option A, which was that Archway Drive be improved to city standards and dedicated as a public roadway. We have to take any questions that you all may have.
So, the variance, though, where does Archway Drive come into the variance request?
In reviewing the variance request for the setback ordinance, Mayor, the development team looks at all of the development requirements that we can foresee in an applications request, not just the one item that they have asked us for. The zoning ordinance requires that if a parcel of property is created, that parcel property must have public access through a public roadway. And so, when we look at the rendering that was submitted as part of the setback request, we recognize that the parcel would be raillocked and not have that public access.
So, the issue that, and I'm the stats committee, so, you know, help me work the, the issue that we have before, which is we don't have a stoplight, we can't build. And now, we're talking about potentially allowing a separate road that will drain traffic out of the Walmart, or, excuse me, out of the development that's being built, to back to Fair Road with no stoplight. You see what I'm saying? I mean, it sounds like to me that if Archway Drive, if it runs through here and is given to the city, it's going to be another major exit for this development, and it's going to be an unlighted exit. Whereas, we have the one down here on Branton that the big deal was we need to have a light there because of traffic concerns and turning left, et cetera. Is that right? I mean, is that correct, what I'm saying?
I think that's fair, is that's right.
Okay.
Can I maybe speak to that?
Yeah.
Since I was sitting down there a couple of weeks ago. This is really, Archway has really been a part of the development plan from the beginning, so it's a legitimate question. So, really, the fact of whether it's public or not, is it too worrisome to me? We really like that other access because people can, most people going out there more likely are going to use the light to make a left turn, run on the Fair Road that they would utilize, and rightly so as a right. So, it would relieve some of the traffic that you might have at Branton and Highway 67. And then people, if they learn that and want to use that as a back way in, it really won't affect Fair Road because we already have the infrastructure planes that let turn lanes. So, it's a good question, but we've really planned for that to be utilized in a sense of the public street from the beginning, and I'm probably glad that they're going to make it a public street to meet. And it would take some upgrades. There's sidewalks that would have to be extended, they'd have to fix some of the curving gutter that was just broken, and we tried to get it to be de-downed to the city on several keys, and this is really afforded the first opportunity to do so, or that they'd want to do so.
I guess, I guess my concern is, and I'm just going to say that I don't go through the McDonald's drive-thru very often there, but if you go through that McDonald's drive-thru and you come out, it's bad traffic there anyway. And then, when you try to take a left there, it's very difficult. So, I'm just thinking, you know, with people that are going to be coming from, I guess, what direction is that, north? And they're going to try to take a left in there, which now, the traffic's just going to be nobody is going to go down to the light and take a left. Anybody coming from the bypass is going to come down to this first street and take a left at Archway. So, you're going to take all that traffic that would have gone down to Branton and go left into that development is no longer going to do that. They're going to go left right there, so we really have a difficult time predicting, I think, what that traffic pattern's going to be. Because that's going to totally take away everybody that's coming from one direction going in there. And I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, after I heard that without a stoplight, you know, it's all bad, and now we're opening up another road, and it's like, oh, we're really, no, don't worry about it, traffic's going to be cool. I guess that's my concern. I mean, do you share any of that side concerns?
I understand your point, but that road's really been a part of this development from the, from the original plan, even that road's always been there as access to this piece of property. From an engineering standpoint, you like to have several places to get in and out, and it would actually maybe relieve some of the traffic at Branton, and those drivers got to figure out, it's kind of like Bermuda Run right now, you know, if you're going to make a left in Branton, you're going to go around Bermuda Run and make that left where the light is, and they'll do the same thing here.
Okay.
Run the easy way and ride in and ride out.
There you go. You, you could, I mean, it's something to look at. It's not something that was part of the original plans and we didn't see it as a necessity, but it's something we may have to put in there as a condition to give staff an opportunity to look at that.
Of course, that's going to be an issue to the McDonald's. Because if it used to be, that was.
Good point.
It's going to be an issue to the doctor's office.
Yeah. The McDonald's would not like that.
No, no, they would not.
Now, one thing it might benefit is if that new traffic system is going into Branton, that'll create a break in traffic, the traffic can reanex.
That's a point.
What's the distance? Between the six?
This is the scale. And that scale. Probably 400 to 500 feet.
Is there, could we conditionally say that if traffic becomes an issue and a light is warranted, the cost of that would be borne by the developer if they wanted variance to redevelop this parcel into additional shops?
Probably can. It's probably not going to be a separation. There's not enough distance between there and clear light. I'm going to go to Branton.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Robert, the distance should right at the market. By the way, I've got a plan.
Thanks, Todd.
Sure, we've got a mayor, I may continue to comment.
Can you come on, Todd?
Sure. I'm the D team, so if you get too deep in it, I'm sure I can go to answer the question. What I do, I do know is that Mandy has laid out a couple of options to you. Developer, I'm also asked to have one more to speak. Maybe I can make a point as well. There are current negotiations taking place with the Market District Property Owners Association that developers acquire this Archway that we were talking about. If that is successful, we have already created, it will not be successful. I think I'm correct in this, it would make the requirement more, you know, the parcel would then meet the road function of the law that it allows. I guess, I guess the like, third option, if surely this is successful, will be this week, of naming the roadway, the Marsway, if they like, if they like to add as an option to the developer. Option 2, to the roadway, because we will then be requiring the law to have for that session. Does that just exactly describe that? It exists to me.
But today, the request today is for a setback variance in order to the final line through the attached building. And examining that request, we want everyone to recognize that today, there's not a live roadway to this parcel, which is why we recommend this condition. I understand that that condition may fade away as unnecessary or relevant to the dates to come, but that's in the data.
Just, just a question, can the council take action in anticipation of this happening today, so that if that happens in the next week or so, you're happy to react to the relevant to ask this question? Or is that something, is that possible? I could, I could.
Well, I think, I think what Mandy said is accurate. We have to deal with the facts as we got this catalog. So, in the event that they were to purchase the right of way, what variances would still happen to be given?
Mayor, if the right of way is purchased and improved to city standards and then dedicated to the city, the only variance that this property would need would be the setback variance at Baymax, and that could be granted this evening if this audit is to be settled.
So, we could grant the setback variance. You could purchase the right of way, bring it to city standards.
Dedicate it.
And then, it's done?
It's done. That's it.
Okay.
David, who did the drawing? I guess, the drawing was done by?
By the applicants.
By the applicant's team. Right. So, and the drawing looks great. I just want to put out, I don't, you look at the pharmacy, and you look at the doctor's office, and the beauty tech in McDonald's, they don't look anything like that. So, I just don't want it to look at this and go, this is really beautiful, and they can have a lot of tree canopy, and everything's going to be nice, because apparently, that's not what our rules are in the size wise. Because it, I mean, the doctor's office looks like a varying wasteland, the pharmacy looks a lot of wasteland. Even if they don't be right by them, I'm just pointing out the fact that we have a good picture. I mean, I'm not asking for different colored cars.
I'm still looking for a Beechey Tech over there.
Not a Beechey, East Orange.
Thank you.
Oh, East Orange.
I mean, I'm, I work at a Beechey Tech, and I'm like, I can't buy it.
You gotta sit quiet. Yeah, so.
Well, I will say, Councilman, this project will be adhered to our newly revised.
I still think I'm going to hear the drawing. I want a canopy of about 30 feet on every one of the trees. It's not a real draw, but, okay, but that being said, that's one issue. The other one is, did we not know this was coming when we went through the whole deal with Walmart? It seems like we did.
No, we knew that they intended eventually to build some small shop space to 16,000 square meters of center. But the tenant, who we've often referred to as tenant people down over at Walmart, they were in the car blowing the horn and ready to go, and so, some of these details that we knew we would have to deal with eventually, we were not able to deal with at the same time, so.
So, they knew they wanted to do something, because normally Walmart, they hold on that street commonwealth of the nation, they own the flats, but they're in.
Actually, they might not own any portion of this, but they are the tenant in the grocery section, and they require the neat small shop space, I think they're certain, but they are the tenant, and the parcel, if there are small shop spaces to build, that parcel would be a separate parcel. So, that's why we're doing this to Walmart. And I do want the council to have a back.
So, the big tenant says, you, in order to do this, you've got to subdivide this and something else.
All the other setbacks are listed in that, she has.
Right. The, I guess the next thing, that the red line you were proposing, obviously what would come, a property line.
That's right.
And after that property line is put in place, this drawing may or may not be accurate. Well, we already know that from the back of it. It may or may not be accurate as far as you could technically construct a wall on that red line. Right? And you could walk out in front of Walmart and get a wall to your left. You wouldn't want to do that. But what I'm saying is, we're getting into, where we got into problems with will of bend and town club, and I know those are far extreme, but we're getting into one piece that are sharing common things, and now, we have two different owners. One owner wants to keep it nice, the other owner says, you know what, nah, I'm not putting windows in.
That's all.
I'm just saying, that's a concern.
It is a concern. It's a concern that we, the staff level, share with you, and we talk about, and I will be candid and tell you that other properties have asked me to recommend something similar, and I have refused to do so because of that very concern. The difference for me on this one, Councilman, was restricted covenants that are privately forward to this particular location. I've reviewed those covenants in my opinion, they were the strongest commercial covenants that we had in the city, and we all know that they're adhered to, you know, very strongly in that particular development, in that area. So, that gave me a level of comfort that I have not had with some previous requests.
And what, what is the life of those covenants?
Mayor, had you read the term recently enough to say exactly what the life is?
Do you know, Todd, the life of them?
I don't know precisely, but they're generally 20 or 25-year documented, sufficient for, and typically have automatic removal.
Okay.
So, there's, you know, it's actually.
Do we have another shopping center in Statesboro that has a wall as a property?
Not, not.
And Todd, I guess that concerns, you know, I mean, it would be like going and saying, whole store is going to buy half of this, and then, you know, someone else is going to buy the other one. I don't, you can't, you can't divide duplex. You said Walmart requires the parcels to have separate ownership?
They do. Because they occupy only, only portion of the whole. And I don't know the term in Walmart's bill, with whole store, with the whole, and we don't forget, this is all going to be owned by the same person. But I realize you're agreeing with the second parcel. I understand that.
Well, then, you end up with a situation like McDonald's, where one person owns the building, and somebody else owns the driveway. Well, I mean, what happens is, they sell that secondary parcel down the road, and somebody says, oh, you can't drive around back at Walmart.
Well, in this case, you all.
Around the back, too?
That's what I mean.
Now, you've got a driveway that doesn't go anywhere.
Well, yeah, but this is all commercial housing, and all the, all the people who are doing this are there to, to lease property to tenants who want, they want to be successful. I don't think the law comes to the conclusion that's all worth staying in the success. So, Councilman Britt, I just don't, I just don't see that as a.
I would agree with, I think none of us would have ever imagined a will of bend or any eight people either, and we have that. Eight tenants and one will, that was never planned, four people, four bedrooms. And now, we have something that we cannot do anything about. I think you're absolutely correct. I don't think there's a, there's a problem. I think there's a precedent issue by dividing something up. The covenant, I guess, does make me feel a little better, though, the homeowners that are handling that, do make me feel a little better, but.
So, maybe I missed this somewhere along the way, Todd, but tell me again, why are the properties being split? Let's be completely clear, why they want to split it?
When the Walmart project was underway, it was at a faster pace than the design of the small shop spaces. So, quite frankly, when we were at the right start, and we did get all those official, official planning, this, I think it was anticipated that it's a part of the law that had these citizens about it to be able to answer. So, all the details, I have to stress that. But after that project was really consolidated, they need, they take it all along to come back and ask to build some small shop space, and see this, and all the other, non-hundred shopping center that we have, small shop space, and this was certainly a deep interest to see. So, they are now back before you asked for, for this, and the tenant had a requirement that, surely they build a small shop space, it'll be only a separate parcel. So, we'll accomplish that, zero lot line, that's a, we're not asking to go back to the old anything, and you have a property, you're not going to build them, so, you're just asking to be able to, that was zero lot line, that's being settled, so.
Do you know why they request not to have, the tenant requests not to have small shops on there? Do you know what the thinking is there? That may help us understand the request, because right now, the request to me sounds strange.
You know, I don't know, there are a lot of things at the Walmart level that I'm sure would be strange to. So, I don't know the answer to that, which I can tell you. They, they quite frankly, just have your policies to make, and I suppose that's one of the ones that they. If, so, if I, if I, I think what you're going to find is that, that red line is going to go away, I think, this is probably the last time you all see that, that line. So, in that, that's how I think it's reality. I'm wondering why, if I, if I, I've got to see.
So, we could put, if, if we're going to allow for the variance, where would we attach conditions on which parcel? Because you could attach conditions to the parcels saying, you will build no wall, you will do, you know, where you could limit something like that happening, but which parcel would you attach it to?
Right now, there's a senior parcel, so I would suggest attaching the conditions to this tax map number, and then, as each subdivision would have to come through our department for approval, and we would pull those conditions and include them in line of subdivision platform, and doing it.
And would they, would those conditions then apply to the both of the parcels as, not just the one, but if you divide it, it would have to apply both?
I would have to include those conditions in line of five subdivisions were placed applying.
Does this parcel actually exist? A separate parcel? How can we grant a variance to a parcel that doesn't exist?
We're granting a variance within the parcel, but that variance will allow for being able to separate the parcels, that's the thing. But allowing for the variance in between buildings, you then give yourself a lot line, which, which you can apply. So, without variance, you don't get the building, you don't get the lot line. Would that be correct? Built to the specs that they would like it to be built to. Okay.
Todd, everything in both of these parcels have to be built to the covenants of, of the neighborhood, right?
That's correct. In addition to that, the building that is yet to be designed, it's all about the architectural, will have to go back to the board, Market District Association, Market District Property Owners Association.
Which building is that? You're talking about the shops?
The small shop space. That building itself is, that people have to come back to the board, that closely held board out of Market District, this sign, and allow everything that you see out there. This development will have to go back to the board and get that approved. So, this board is not going away, and they're, they're there until the council come home with this development. That's what they're there for, and that's why I think the overall development is called a, is a, is a, unfortunately, Andy has a lot of board initiatives on regulations, even the help of design, control, excellence, and, I'm not sure if I'm wrong, just about. This board is a great example of why, why some of that might be what I did.
Well, I have faith in the board of Market District. Could they, could they keep either, keep either parcel from building a wall?
I think they can. I think they can, I don't, I don't, you can't commit for them, but I think they have the power to review and approve the site plan, as well as, don't think they.
They do, and they've been very active, Councilman, in reviewing the grocery stores, the site plans, and architectural designs, and I know that that tenant has had to go back to Dawn more on at least one, if not more occasions, and were satisfied with requirements of the covenant in that particular location.
And, and so I think the answer to that is yes, though I'm, I'm not sure many things that they, they will. But I'm sure I don't think it's wrong for you all to put your own, if you've got a concern about a wall, and I, I'm not sure if you have a bigger top office, but if you've got a concern, I would speak to like that as well.
I don't think we have a concern about a wall, per se. I think we have a concern about there being a conflict between the two property owners, should somebody decide to sell one parcel or another.
Yeah, you're sharing parking lots, driveways, and, I mean, and I'll be quite honest, I feel a little uncomfortable approving something that the Architectural Covenant Committee has not even passed yet.
Well, if.
Seems like we're doing it the other way around.
If you could imagine how the, you all could figure this out, first Walmart, you have Walmart, they set, they're in control of the, there's quite a bit of difference between that original drawing and what they, the Department of District, you know, approved to the cities, but if, they knew they're done, a lot of, a lot of points that the developer had to go back and ask Walmart if they would have reached it, and Walmart, to their credit, goes to you, so they, they, they received some architectural things that they cannot run, unless particularly, this is popular, this property, so, even though it sounds like a backwards process, it's a way to process it, and I, I, and I'll tell you this from a practical standpoint, even if these parcels end up being divided and sold, and they've got two separate owners, you've still got the small shop space owner who has tenants who he wants to keep that, and you've got a grocery store who is going to be there regardless of what happens. And I don't think you got, I don't think, I don't think you would have any vibes from the owner, because they all, they, they need to be able to do this. And I'm not saying that, you know, all that might be perfect, or I'm not saying they don't fight, they all got to be citizens, you know. And in terms of the site plan, if you do have site plan control, we can certainly assure you that, you know, my alley, I'm not too busy with, with site plan, and walls, and those types of things. In fact, probably what you will see approved would be more stringent than what you, you all, you know, and, and, here's saying, they, they think that's definitely on, and what I think they have to be.
I guess, what concerns me, I think, was that either a point made by Councilman Rooney or Councilman Boerim, I can't remember, but it's setting a precedent of running a property line through a development like this. So, in, in doing so, I, I go back to would it be wise to say that, you know, not necessarily disagree with the variance, but to put some conditions on it so that council is comfortable that development will be consistent across those two properties? Is that something that would be doable to you?
You know, I, I think that the concept of it is, is probably, I think it depends upon what, what you actually say.
Just saying that there's no visible separators between properties, some things that would be fairly obvious that one property owner could do that, you know, by virtue of owning their property, give a consistent appearance across there?
Well, if in.
Community access, community properties.
Yeah, things of that nature.
If, if indeed the Architectural Committee is going to be more stringent than the city, I contend that if the Architectural Committee approves it, then it would be something that we would be comfortable with. And so, why not run it by the Architectural Committee, which is supposedly more stringent than us, and then come to us, which, we, if our ordinances are supposedly more lax, then why not get approval from them first before you get a proposal? Because, I mean, I think that's our biggest concern, is that the, the surrounding property owners and things are, are comfortable with this. And, you know, we've already said, a ride in, ride out, which might be beneficial to the city, may not be happy, even McDonald's may not be happy.
What do you want to talk to the others on?
I don't know, haven't had a chance to talk to that.
I just, this, the setback department is still in existence in terms of the, the size.
All I was getting at is, the Architectural Committee, seems to me that running it by the Architectural Committee, if they're stricter than us, would demonstrate that they've got a plan together, and that they're not going to put up Will's metaphorical wall.
I hear you, I understand your comment, I, I think that you can do the same thing by, by approving the condition, you can hear about my condition, and the, the issues here, and, and others that you have, others. And I think that you'll see, and they are, they're, 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 they're already, I think that's the words that speaks to what you see.
And I will say, I have talked to adjacent property owners, and they don't have an issue with the variance. I mean, you know, I've asked a few of them, I said a few too, to be exact, but they are literally next door to it. So, but they thought they were actually pushing the building back to the lot line, not changing the setback within its own footprint, so, you know, that would be accurate.
I was just, if you can, if we can say that the engineering, the bidding, the manufacturing, the paving, all that stuff, all the contracts, needs to be examined, and the buildings aren't built yet. So, we agreed to several conditions for Walmart building, at, with assuming it looked like eggs, and now, if all of a sudden you have two different parking lines, two different sets of trees, two different sets of sidewalks, one guy likes LED lights, and the other guy's don't, in there. And, um, so, we do that, so, I'm just saying, I don't know how to write that off, but if you basically say, look, plan a review on these two, since you're, since you're faking that you're separating it anyway, I mean, you just basically told us this, it's bold and it's really due to the piece of property, it's the same guy, he just put a line in it. So part of me wants to go, well, why do we need to do it? We need to do it because the tenant wants, oh, that's between the tenants' development, not the city council. But, if it makes the development something moving forward, it will help, but I want to know that it's done by the same person?
I think you can even say, there'd be a continuity in the development, treat that for you.
Materials.
That's why I go back to all the variance, the granting the variance, you could stipulate all of that in granting the variance, to, to, to be attached to that property if indeed it is created.
I think that's essentially the way to approach it. Even if they don't want to provide development, with their own best, they can, they can.
So, then I'll ask Mandy this, would it then be appropriate to table and attach those conditions to the variance spring back into the weeks?
It, it could be, however, I, I think we can accomplish this tonight.
Okay.
It's fine, so, staff has recommended two conditions. One is just the, the explicit that this variance is internal to this lot only. We word that in, in your chapter, as such, this variance regarding side yard setbacks and building separation shall apply only and shown for internal lot line, as illustrated on attached concept C, to provide for singular attached retail development, variance that shall not apply to adjacent properties not participating in the housing in the case. Second recommendation, or condition, is public access to the present parcel shall be granted through council's requirement of public access. I'm giving two options, I would suggest archway drive must be approved from city standards and that may be city State Road's public driveway. And then the third condition could be warranted to be in fact, that the attached retail, retail space shall be constructed without separation, and with thorough access and consistent in facade, appearance, landscape, lighting, parking, etc.
Can you read that one more time for us?
Well, I'll read it up as I win.
Oh, I said it really good. Oh, no, I shouldn't have squawked with ten to the page. Okay, all right, do your best again to try to say that.
The third one, that the attached retail space shall be constructed without separation, and consistent in facade, landscape, lighting, parking, appearance, etc.
And obviously would have to be approved through planning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Before a building permit were to be issued. Okay, I went back to all there. Any further comments from council, I do?
So we can, we can attach variances to theoretical property lines?
We are attaching the variance to the 9.9 acres that currently exist.
If it's subdivided, it goes with it, because it's a cluttered in the lot. Do you agree, Ellen? Do I have a motion from council to grant the variance in item five with the conditions stated by Mandy Kobe?
I make a motion to reapprove application B fourteen dash six dash one.
Okay.
With recommendations from staff one, two, and three, that Mandy just said, what she said?
You don't have to say it again, it's all good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Variance request. Okay, remember, we moved item thirteen down to this area of agenda, I'm gonna, item thirteen is an update to Mayor Council regarding LND Produce. Again, I'm gonna ask Mandy to speak to this, and tell us where we are with this. I think council has a timeline in their packet regarding this particular issue. It's pretty much near the end, somewhere there, let's see. Do we have the timeline? Now, the timeline's in the back, if y'all want to see your last page, right here of your agenda packet, you'll see the timeline that we had to deal with this issue that began. It looks like back April second, two thousand and thirteen, so I'll ask you to refer to that last page, so we packet on that. And then a letter that was issued to Mr. Gerald on July tenth, two thousand and fourteen, regarding our meeting today, and then the conditions that were, we asked Mr. Gerald to comply with on November twenty second, two thousand and thirteen, regarding this property. So, Mandy, will you please update us as to where we stand?
Yes, ma'am, to be, to be brief, we stand essentially where we did when we last visited this issue on March eighteenth. To my knowledge, most, if not all, of the outstanding requirements for a building permit to issue remain outstanding at this time, which means that this property does not have a building permit, does not have exclusive occupancy, nor does it have a business license or technically non-application tax certificate. The one hundred and twenty day grant of time that you all awarded to Mr. Gerald at LND Produce expires later this week on July seventeenth. So I'm bringing this back to you all to update and add to your action.
So, let me ask you this, Mandy, if we look at the letter on November twenty second, two thousand and thirteen, it addressed five areas, fire department went out and looked, engineering department went out and looked, water sewer went out and looked, sanitation and planning and development. And it looks like the, the issues with the fire department, it got a status of denied, and they have not been remedied, is that correct?
That's correct.
The issues with the engineering department, which was approval of the driveway must be issued by the Department of Transportation, provided to the city, that has not happened?
Correct.
Okay. Water sewer department, that was approved with conditions, you'll have to tell me, where is that water sewer? If you look at those?
There, there are still issues with water sewer, water sewer remain under dog.
Can you tell me what those are?
The, the property is currently being served with water from a fire hydrant, through a hose, obviously that melts me in a number of centers. There has been a meter placed at hydrant to, to put water at the site on a temporary basis, and a fee was paid for that, which is theater, but we are well past the time that we would allow that to continue under water.
Okay, sanitation approved, I guess, there's a, a card of some kind dumpster there. And then in planning and development, it says approved with conditions, can you tell me what conditions have not been met?
They particularly needed to address signage at the location. This is this letter, Mayor, as part of our standard process, Mr. Gerald bids to submit a building permit application, as he was asked to do back in November. When a building permit application comes in, it is circulated throughout the entire development team, we're reviewing a comment, well, you have before you were comments that needed, that various members of the development team identified as needing to be addressed, and therefore permit to issue. What that means is the permit application itself is sufficient in some way. So generally speaking, we would send these comments out, and the applicant would remedy their plans, make whatever arrangement they need to resubmit to us, and then at that time, we would issue the actual permit and allow, while it's been, with the assurances from the submitted plans, the documents that were once completed, would be not allowed to safety, and those regulations that the city has that were responsible for it. That's essentially where we saw.
Mr. Gerald, would you like to speak? I see you getting up out of the chair, come on up.
I would like for this to be tabled for a few days, till, I can get, like, the other way something that they come up, and I think that we need to, to handle, and something that I need to handle about this property out there. Councilor, I have to rule, I want to do. Mandy, she knows what I'm helping out, I can do it. There's a chance that we could, I understand, I'll say. I would ask to be able to say, we're not know, but I'm asking, I was gonna have to ask them. There's another guy, he's always putting in oxygen. They said the building was proved, all right, I had to move the paint, I thought I was going to do it, and I'm going to be, be the school. And everybody knows, I didn't have a, play some, and it's such a, name was plugged in, but it's a free room. So we are moving there, saying, all of them, certainly, to, 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 to see.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gerald, Bobby's up to call you?
Well, I guess I'm just trying to get a handle on where we are on the timeline.
The timeline is if you list this table is within two weeks, I'm not going to be back here too long.
Well, and I don't argue that. But I don't argue that at all, but on the 17th of July, which is just two days from now, technically it could be in violation or something. And we've got public safety and everybody here, the only thing that it'd be in trouble. So are we saying that we're going to allow this to be? Because we've got no choice now. We have to do something to go past the 17th people or after the 17th.
Mayor just read April 2nd.
April 7th.
Great, but probably here April 2nd, April 1st.
I didn't read April 2nd.
July 17th, 2014.
I apologize, I just.
April 2nd, 2013 was when you initially, yeah. It wasn't 2014.
I thought it was April.
No, the last time you were here.
I'm not here, I'm in, I'm in.
No, I understand, well, I just want to be clear, the last time when Mandy mentioned was March 18th.
Yeah, I didn't. We have a very civil conversation.
Well, I'm glad. Civil conversations are good.
I am not here to, you, I don't have many other things that I see wrong across this city. I just, I haven't got a full, full house yet.
Well, I guess the question is, between now and through the weekend, and Monday, will you be open Monday more? I'm trying to come up with a date so that we know that. Yes, sir.
Last reason I ask if you would table it for two weeks.
But we can't table.
Give me a chance to take care of something that doesn't really need to be screened, maybe with y'all, but not.
And the only thing that this council can do is either not, is either tell our staff to not enforce the lack of followings, which we don't want to do, or this council can extend what you've done for 15 days or whatever the first meeting is in August. But we can't table this decision because on, two days from now, you're in violation of the order.
All right, I'm asking you then, given that you put it away, is give me the 15 days of the first.
Right, and that's just to be clear, that's the only two things that we can do today.
That's just a different way of asking, no, I'm asking. It's going to be tabled.
I'm going to stop and ask City Attorney Allen Lake Bart. I don't want to say your opinion necessarily on extending the deadline, but in the event we were to say, Mr. Gerald, I'm sorry. We gave you the last 14 months. And here we are again. And here we are at, back kind of where we've been every time, which is give me some more time to take care of it. Give me some more time to take care of it. And I'm hearing what you're saying, okay? I am, I promise you, I'm hearing what you're saying. What is the remedy? If we say, you know, Mr. Gerald, no. We've given you enough time and operated your own, you know, peril for life and better time. Because you'll be subject to having to meet this criteria, you know, legally. What is that point?
If the, our department can expect you to build and what he said is true, then if he is basically approved, it's not approved. So we won't be in no bother.
Mr. Gerald, I don't think you have a problem with the city. However, we cannot issue you a building permit without the GOT permit, or GDOT permit, excuse me. So what is the status of that? Everything else really is moot. If they're not going to give you a permit from the Department of Transportation, we can, you can pass fire and you can pass everything else. But Robert, tell me if I'm wrong, if we can't, if we don't have a permit from GDOT, then it's a moot point.
You're right, I didn't want to do anything. Miss Mandy, nothing further. We don't need to know he say, she say, okay?
Has the application been filed?
Yes.
It has been filed, you have confirmation from who?
I don't, that's the reason I didn't have time to call this thing. The information she has requested, it has been, to her, to my knowledge.
But it's not just the, you know, the approval would have to be granted. And I think the last time you were here, y'all had submitted the application. Is that what, I believe that's what Mr. Franklin said.
I'm not the one. It will be settled with proof, as we said, if the grant's not fifteen days, yeah, it can make sure of it.
Well, I'm going to be real honest with you right now. What I'm hearing you say is concerning to me. What I'm hearing you say, Mr. Gerald, almost sounds threatening in a way.
No, no.
And I don't, let me, hang on.
She doesn't have the papers that she has.
No, hang on, hang on. Let me finish. When I look at approval from the Department of Transportation, that's not a two-week thing. That's a several-week thing. So to sit here and say, if you don't have where that has been, wait, 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 just give me a second, I promise you, you can respond. If, I don't even know that that's, application's been done and if it hasn't been done, you're looking at 30 to 45 days minimum to get an approval and to go through Atlanta for it to come back and do all the things it has to do. And I'll refer to City Manager Chasford, see if he disagrees with what I'm saying. Then you're telling me you're going to take care of it some way in two weeks.
That means I'll have to shut it down.
Okay. Well, that's what you need to come on and tell us what's going on.
I need the 14 days to find out if we have to, so that you say G.
The Department of Transportation.
I've been told if we have.
Right, great, perfect.
I'm not the landlord, I do not have a paper in my possession. Miss Mandy has requested, she tells me she does not have a communication.
I do not, how did you know that?
When did you request them?
March 19th.
You haven't GDOT application?
I don't believe anything from Mr. Franklin since the email that he sent.
That is the only thing that I have seen from Mr. Franklin, the email that he sent.
Which was just the intent, not in that actual application?
Yes.
And council, I don't need to invest $15,000 or whatever.
That's why I asked you about the permit.
I'm kind of here. And I need to take it off, so I'm going to do that. Because I'm thinking this lady has a children. I'm not making, nothing is taken on my fault. I have to send to the office. And I asked him, so it's the last in two weeks. It is whatever if you copy it, I don't whether it's been done or not, or if it will be done or not.
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion. Is that we don't extend the deadline. And you can proceed forward to get what you need to do taken care of. It doesn't mean that enforcement might be out there tomorrow. But I can't sit here, Mr. Gerald, I want to be completely honest with you, and look at the timeline that's been provided. The property owner is an attorney. He knows exactly what the law is. And we've asked you to meet conditions that other business owners have met when being asked. And this has been going on since April the 2nd, 2013. I'm sorry for you, that you and the landlord haven't been able to get together and do the things that need to be done to get that property up to where it can, you can have a business permitted on it. That sounds like an issue between you and the landlord, not an issue between you and council. We've given you every single opportunity to work that out. And even had council, I mean, the owner of the property in here, and said, we got to have this. This is not an option for this governing body to continue to expose the city to potential liability of a business that's not permitted appropriately for the last 15 months, 14 months. So, you know, council obviously has the vote and can decide how they want to move forward. My concern is and has been that, you know, as stewards of the city, we have to limit exposure to taxpayer dollars and liability where it's appropriate to do so. And right now, we're not. And I just, it's just my opinion, I'm sorry that it's taken this turn for you, I truly am. I'm sorry that Mr. Franklin and you weren't able to work together to make sure that those conditions were met, conditions that were laid out without any question whatsoever back in March. And now your back's against the wall, and you're upset, and you're looking for council to remedy a situation that's between you and the landlord. And I don't see how we can do that.
Our, my, Mr. Franklin called me today in 11 o'clock. Told me that Miss Cody told him that the told him that the GDOT was not, did not affect me. I said, Mr. Franklin, do you mind if I repeat that at City Council? He said, no, that's what she told me.
Did you have the conversation, man?
I had a conversation with Mr. Franklin this morning, in which he asked me if the GDOT permit was the only permitting each business permit. Mr. Gerald, and I said, no. The lack of a GDOT permit was one of several outstanding files in this situation.
And frankly, you know, that's documented here.
And I will go back as far as to say that I talked with Mr. Howard Tucker today about putting in the thing, sewage. I've got a guy that is ready to put the bathroom in, taking 72 hours. I always got to have the money to pay all the fees downstairs. That's what I spent most of my day doing today, so I would have everything together. And then Miss Cody calls me this afternoon, but I had called her questioning the time, you know. And so I say, and we get in this conversation. He said, she said, to me is no good. Mr. Tucker will have the bathroom in in 14 days. But we got to have a GDOT, that's the main thing. Not one of you seven on council will spend $10,000 or $12,000 on property that you did own unless you knew it was not to be done.
Well, as a business owner, you make a decision as to where to locate your business. That's your choice. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, well, has there actually been an application submitted to GDOT that you know of? Have you sent paperwork for that?
I have not seen anything, something that I would consider to be an application. What I have seen is what I sent to you all on last, in March.
Which was an intent to send an application?
It was an intent to send an application. And I have a letter in my file, dated March the 10th, that is signed by Mr. Franklin, that says, when I send it to the intent of an application, it will be submitted. But again, I have an application from GDOT in hand, none of the other staff members have this in their hands. So, as far as I know.
I do know there's an application once filed, because I talked with this guy, Justin.
Did these several people apologize to him?
Anyway, and he told me, he said, yes, he said, I have got it in front of me, and everything will be okay. And they had one other question, she, I'm sending back, and it didn't reach. That was really the last that I talked with anybody to be okay.
How long ago, Mr. Gerald? How long ago was that?
About two months. And I have, I have worked with the guys, and I'm working with it, I got everything, you know, and I feel somebody is bugging, that this might be good. And it could be very much J. Kevin, and asking you for some good personal benefits, you know, your finances, and you sort of. I was pretty assured by you that it was important to do. And even the Dallas Bridge is wonderful, I'm new, I've got nothing on paper to say. I would love to stay out there. But I don't, it's just not going to do. You're not going to do me anything that is totally wrong. When I left you here, I immediately had a map there for whatever we need to do to build and get it approved, have the wheelchair around, everything else. Ultimately, it's right of the market, I clearly said it was true. And then the only two lines of evidence is still there today. You know, other than the GDOT, now that I, he just flat refused, he said, then I, I can no short of walk it.
Well, I think this point.
I need to get that paper to Miss Cody.
How soon can you do that?
Does council want to make a motion to extend this with some conditions or for this brief period of time, which for the life of me, I cannot look at this list. Let's just, let's just be completely brutally honest. I cannot look at this list and see where in two weeks you can meet these things. I don't see that. So if council's going to look at extending it, then you need to extend it with reality. Or you need to, or it's conditions or whatever, but, you know, do I have a motion to do that? Would we entertain a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to extend it until August the 4th or 5th, I was just looking at it. The next meeting, and, I mean, we've got to have proof, Mandy, what do we need? Be proof that an application has been filed?
With the Department of Transportation.
With DOT.
Do you want an application filed, Kinsman, or do you want a permit to be issued? Because I can't issue a building permit until I have an appointment permit that has been issued by.
From the DOT.
So that's what I'm saying, you're talking several weeks out.
Well, if they, if they got an application in March.
What I have been told is true, that should be. If what I have been told is true, it should be a permit in his eye.
With the DOT.
With DOT, for the cut. Now, I did see where, where Ellis Wood had a proposal, when we was, when I was in there yesterday, I've been in there for the last month, once or twice.
Where is there, Mr. Gerald?
At, at the attorney's office.
Okay.
Women's front. Have a minute.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If, if we don't have DOTs, you, whatever you, you call this permit where the cut can be made, if this is not already approved, then council has given me ample opportunity and I failed by following up in a timely manner, and I need to shut the doors. That's what I'm trying to say. If the application is approved, Miss Mandy needs, and I need...
If you can get that to her by the next meeting on the fifth, uh, I'd be willing to extend it until then.
So we're extending it pending what council rules? What do you need?
Pending, um, uh, if, if, if the application was, uh, was sent in in March, I would think they have, they would have approved it by now. And you said that they, he does have an, uh, hasn't, hasn't approved in his file. Did you just say that?
I did, I did not see the approval of the permit. I seen the proposal that Ellis Wood, where he was going to charge to do the cut. So I assumed that you couldn't give a bet on doing the cut without having all of the...
DOT permission.
Yeah, and all those...
DOT permission.
They did all kind of stuff up here. Those, you know, drawn out where, what moves.
Well, I'm willing to give until the first meeting in August.
To, and by what, what do you need to say?
To see if, uh, I don't know, if the application was just put in yesterday, that's going to kind of make me angry. If it was put in, in March, I can go along with that.
But what, what do you need to say?
At least if the application's been filed with, with the Department of Transportation.
If it was filed in March and there should be some indicator as to whether or not it would be approved or, or disapproved.
Exactly, and I'd, I'd like to see. Have you been to information you can get from the Department of, uh, Transportation? If he's working on it?
We should be able to get that information, shouldn't we?
We could find out the status of the settlement. We could do that.
Okay, so we can do that on our end, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't need, I, the city inspector's role has given a list that we give other people to do. And I personally want to be out of the variance granting business. I don't mind gaining it for a period of time if someone's got something to do or drawing imaginary lines between buildings. I can understand that, but for fourteen months, we have asked for information. I don't have any idea what the handrails look like, nor am I going to go in there. Something happened. But if the fire department does not tell me there is a problem, then I assume we're fine. Currently, November twenty-second, the fire department said there was a problem. So I don't, John, I'm okay with there being an extension. I just think, I know that you're, y'all are busy right now, right? Very busy. Right? And I'm looking at the two inspectors, y'all are busy. Y'all, y'all are code enforcement. And then I asked us loosely, Mayor, and, 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 could y'all not be busy Monday? I asked that. So between now and Monday, they're very busy. And, and then we go from there. And I'm saying, we're not, if we make another statement, say fourteen more days, at some point, somebody's going to come back to us and go, well, screw it, I don't need a building permit, you guys gave people fourteen months and fourteen days. I think we're, we're, we don't need the variance. If everything is done, the mayor's thought it out, can't get this done in two weeks. So fourteen days coming, may not give him the time to do this, but if everything's already done, those two employees, one of those two employees will verify this and take it out of our hands. If you make a motion, I support it, because I, I want to help him. I'm just saying, I'd like to be out of the variance.
I'd like to see this put within.
So, so, between now and the next time...
So fourteen days is expected and that's the way it is.
I think it, I think...
Well, it always is.
Well, if, if, but if you say always fit, you're, you are, we are documenting that he can operate for a, for a great period. I'm just saying, they're busy. It's a great period. He, he got a couple days anyway. He got to the seventeenth, the weekend's coming up, it's busy. But Monday, Tuesday, they're making a list on what they're doing that week, and, and, and someone would probably say, hey, we've been finished with this and we got to look at it. I'm just saying, that's, that's kind of where we're going. I think we gave some people some chances in the past, and we let them work. So I think, Gary, you and I remember doing stuff over the weekend. Well, I knew you got stuff going on the weekend. But I'm just saying, if we put fourteen more days on it done and it goes, and at that point, what's going to happen? If three of these items are done, are we going to go thirty more days? Because alcohol are done. I, I just, I don't, I don't want to do that.
Well, we do, he does have until July seventeenth.
Exactly.
Can you get all that information before July seventeenth? If Department, if the Department of Transportation has, are given the go-ahead for, uh...
It should be in this file that I was shooting at.
I go back to, to me, this is not an issue between Mr. Gerald and the city. This is an issue between Mr. Gerald and Mr. Franklin. And it's been an issue the entire time. Mr. Franklin's the one that controls the property. Mr. Franklin's the one that's got the file, but whether or not there is a permit in it, we don't know. Whether or not there was an application submitted, I understand that there was. We don't know if it was permitted. We don't know what's going on with it because it's Mr. Franklin's property.
Now, he says responsible, he can give me a copy of that so I can put that in.
Well, that's between you and Mr. Franklin.
Always has.
And I will add that, that deal, any day.
I would like, uh, Councilman Lewis has asked a couple times to speak.
I'm sitting here and I'm hearing this, I'm hearing that, a little one, I was saying, man, she paid us everything that she had.
That's right.
All right, that's the main one. Number two, I've heard, let's go to court. All right, now, I'm hearing the file, the, the paper's in his file, and I'm also here in my council book saying, let's, and not the exact word, but let's give him a chance to operate without a permit. Am I right to say that?
Well, that, that's, if you extend it, that, that is what we're...
And that's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Why don't, why don't, then, why don't let's just do what we supposed to do? I mean, you know what I'm saying all the time, it's this, we can't treat everybody the same because everybody's not the same, but we can sure treat everybody fairly. I said, fair, if you make everybody get their stuff and bring it for us, why not do what we're supposed to do here and move on? It's six, it's, it's something itself, we want to move on to project. We all want to help, you are right. But what does it take after this? I mean, let's just do what we got to do and move on. If we not on, allowing to operate, let's just, let's say, we can't do it, it's not our fault, walk away from Mr. Franklin and say, you, you put me in a bag, not you put me in a bag. It's not the city council, it's you, Mr. Franklin. But right now, what I'm hearing, somebody in the back, I'm saying, hell, it's city council. Do, 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 do what you got to do, I'll stand behind you. That's what I'm saying in the full time, Mr. Franklin, promise everything, I think you promise, I have this in time, you know, but it's not here. What else can we do, gentlemen, ladies? Let you everybody, let you everybody out here. I mean, that, that just, Ellis Wood, we can't do no one of your already.
I think that we actually have read on something here.
I love you too.
I do, I do believe you articulated my sentiments much more emotionally than I did, but I, I agree with you. I think, I go back to my main concern is, our job is to protect and serve the city of state's law. And your job is to run a business and work it out with your landowner of which you put the business on. And I feel like, as Mr. Lewis just said, we're being the ones that are being asked to expose the city to liability while you try to work something out with the landowner that's been going on for a long time. I can't in good conscience continue to do that. My fellow councilman may, in good conscience, want to do that. I can't, and it's nothing against you, Mr. Gerald, whatsoever. It just is the fact that the city is exposed, it has liability and it allows somebody to operate without permits, et cetera. And that's what we've continued to do. Now, whatever's going on between, uh, you and Mr. Franklin, so far as getting that property up to where it needs to be for you to operate legally and lawfully, we have no way whatsoever to affect that. We don't. And so I go back to my original promise that, you know, extending it, I think would be a mistake. And I'm going to ask for a motion from council if they so choose to extend that deadline again. Would you want to go back and, and do that, John? If so, I'll, I'll ask for a motion and we'll ask for a second.
Well, you've still got three days. If you say all this stuff is, uh, in his file, can you get that to Mandy in the next three days?
I get it to her, then we'll hit, see if we can finish everything.
If you satisfy Mandy, you'll satisfy me.
He may hand me a permit, I can really, really, but I doubt seriously, you know, the requirements are really permanent, it's pretty difficult to, based on, you have to install the property, install that, they're, there are issues that we may, maybe he can't do it in three days, but I, I don't believe that he will, he will accept that.
If I went down and paid city council over the city, down there in the morning, fourteen hundred dollars for the water, they got to come out and dig, and, and let me agree.
I, I, I'm not your advisor, but I'll, I'm with you. I wouldn't do it without that DOT permit.
Yeah.
Or that GDOT permit, so...
And, and I, I agree with, 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 with the GOT, and then, if it's not there, like I said, Mike definitely wants to do it. He doesn't have it, I don't think city council definitely wants to do it.
Well, I think at this point, city council, I, I'll ask for a motion if I don't get a motion to extend that, but in, in that case, uh, Mr. Gerald, you'll be operating on your own at this point, and you'll have to work it out for landlord and the city will be in a position of looking at enforcing its codes at some point. Do I have a motion?
That's, that's what she's saying, we just, we could go on to the next agenda.
Okay. Then at this point, then, um, at this point, that deadline has not been extended.
But you still have until the seventeenth. I'd like to see you meet all the requirements. I wouldn't, I don't want to see you go out of business.
No.
Uh, Mandy, would you mind updating me on the seventeenth?
Okay. Mandy, can you send us all out an email and let us know what you're saying? I would appreciate that.
Sure, we're sorry for your plight, but there's difference between what we'd like to do and what we're charged to do.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item number six, which is a consideration of a motion for the purchase of one midway front loaded refuse body with a compressed natural gas system in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. I would ask Mr. Jason Moore to speak to that item, please.
Mayor, item six and seven...
Can you speak in the mic for the next one? Thank you.
Item six and seven are together for the same truck. It's broken out in two separate items, so this is what it's originally presented, and we're asking for a bit extension on the original pricing of the body and of the cabin chassis, um, pretty straightforward, it's the same truck that we've got now in service. I'd like to take any questions in front of the head.